Well, it's over.
M T B E.
They have for years.
M T B E.
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting. This is September twenty first, two thousand twenty three. First item is we're gonna take attendance. Two of our members are absent tonight, so I'm gonna ask Teresa to stay in for Susan Young's tonight.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have.
Paul's here.
Oh, Paul's here.
No, we're gonna do this too.
I know.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul.
Hi, I'm Alex.
How you doing?
Yeah.
I had an electronic.
We better come and see. Well, I didn't know that. See what.
We have four?
Yes, we do.
We don't know.
We got four. Okay. Okay, we're gonna take attendance here.
Adam Monk.
Paul King, Craig Fornier.
Teresa Fenimore.
So we have four in quorum. Let's talk about the Evans driveway discussion first. I know you brought up the section about the Webster driveway permit, and I'd like Russ to read that section, just to refresh your memory.
All right, I'm hoping this is the right one. In the case of a driveway intersecting a state road, issuance of a state driveway permit shall be regarded as compliant with the Webster requirements for the design of the driveway-street intersection.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, and you guys can, you can just talk about this, but it sounds to me like the way it reads, if they get a state permit that overrides the.
Town.
Town driveway regulations.
It doesn't override the town.
Right. The town has more rights than the state does, I think.
I understand that, but the way this reads.
Can I comment here? But if you go back at some of the past planning board meetings, particularly that one back in, I think it was twenty eleven for Blackberry Lane, it referenced that the town's concern was their right of way. The town does not have a right of way on the state road.
Correct.
You know, and the apron is part of the right of way.
Let me paint you a little bit of a picture. Supposedly that you were building a house and you had to have a driveway on a town road, and you had to do the asphalt thing at the end of your driveway. Now, you've got a friend of yours or anybody that you know is building on a state road, and they don't have to. So now you have to dig, dish out whatever the cost is for yours, but he doesn't have to. Now, how does that make you feel?
Well, he lives on the state road.
I know. I'm just supposed to.
But that's, that's not the issue. The issue is.
It is, it is the issue, because many years ago, the planning board had this very same question come up to them, and this was back before my time, and in order to make it a level playing field for everybody in town, they decided that every road on an asphalt road had to have the apron.
I have a list of driveways on Battle Street and Long Street here that have been built since the regulation was put in that do not have aprons. Every house that I looked at that was built since the, the regulation was in in two thousand seven does not have an apron. Those that do have an apron that are new houses have a fully paved driveway. So it's not being held consistently.
I can't vouch for what happened before my time ten years ago, but that's, that's the way I have always enforced it, because I'm the driveway, or was the driveway man with the road agent that would inspect the driveways. I, I can't vouch for what happened before me, but I know everything that I've been doing. I've been trying my very level best to comply with the regulations that were set.
There's a precedent.
Now, this, this planning board can change it.
There's, there is a precedence, though. On the state roads, there's a precedence.
Do you have any comments?
I don't, but this, your, it shows your whole thing of driveway regulations in that packet right there.
Well, yeah, and he just read the relevant section.
Well, this, that, that's what, you know, when you start reading right through it, there's more than, than just that.
Yeah, there's a lot more than this.
Well, I understand that, but the question is which, what has precedents? And, I mean, this, this, this section is, in my opinion, is poorly written.
Well, that.
Well, like I said.
If I was on the town road, I would agree that I would have to have.
Yeah, and I, I think that's one of the changes we should make, but at the current time, this is what it says.
Mm-hmm, and that's what the planning board has to go by, for what it says in the rules.
David?
I just want to make one comment, not regarding whether this should or should not be done, but your comment that going back to the start of the regulation in two thousand seven, when I was on the planning board, and I don't recall the exact year, we did update the driveway regulations, and so that would have been, I'm guessing, five-ish years ago.
A lot longer than that, because I've been on the planning board since I was ten, and I haven't seen you on the planning board. He was there for a year.
I was on the planning board for a few years before, I was on, for a couple of years before the select board.
Yes, I'm, I'm bad, I do remember.
And with Sue, with Sue as the chair, we updated the driveway regulations.
It was on there in two thousand seven, I saw a two thousand seven copy, and that's what I used for a benchmark.
What section is that?
I'll give you the page number. It's in the middle of page five, under B, B two A on page five.
Yeah. I'm gonna read this one more time. Do you have any comments?
With, with regard to the state and the town, be there difference?
Yeah, and to Mr. Evans's point.
To your point, I understand your frustration with the rules not being enforced consistently. I, I also agree that I wasn't here for the others to be approved or not approved, and I do think that we need to start enforcing rules we have on the books. With that said, I wouldn't be beyond working with, with this board to bring it more in line with the state versus the town roads, and the differences between a state road and a town road, and the differences between who maintains the road that your driveway is on. I do understand that. That, that's how I feel. I really think there should be a difference, but right now, there is not a difference.
So let me just read this one more time. In the case of a driveway intersecting a state road, the issuance of a state driveway permit shall be regarded as compliance with the Webster requirements for the design of the driveway-street intersection.
That means we should comply with the, with the town regulation, even though it's a state road.
Now, can I add, when I went for my permit, I gave an engineering diagram. The engineering diagram that was approved by the planning board did not have an apron on it, and the only comment on the driveway permit was watch the grate, and I understand the town has full control over the grate.
You should have gotten a driveway application, and on that application, it tells you you had to have an apron. So we didn't feel that was necessary to put it on there.
But it goes back to the reading of the, the, the language of the regulation. It's all in the language.
It's all in the language. It's, it's all in how you read it. You read it one way, and we read it a different way.
So when I look at the part about the apron, it's, the context of it is referring to town roads, because context of it says you can't alter the, the town road without the approval. That's the next sentence after having the requirement of the apron.
I believe somewhere in there, it also states that they must abide by town regulations. I don't know exactly where it is, but I'm sure it's in there somewhere. State roads must apply, must, must be, I don't know what, what it is, but with, with the town regulations.
Is there any more discussion?
What would be involved in making the changes?
To the regs?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can't do that tonight.
You don't owe the public hearing.
I don't wanna talk about that tonight.
That's why I'm asking.
These are the regs the way they are, yes.
Might I suggest reading part two, scope, and then the very first section of five specifications? Is, that may show that the regulations either say something or conflict with itself.
And page six, specifications.
Two scope showing page three, at least in what I've just accessed on the website, and yes, top of page six for five.
Maybe you could help us, Paul. Tell us what the purpose of the apron is.
The purpose of the apron is, in the past, driveways were becoming a nuisance, and when they come out of that driveway, they were digging up the, cracking the asphalt, that, well, on the state road, on the town road, so it costed towns more money to fix that, that problem, so that's the reason why the apron is there.
For the town road.
Well, that's for.
That, we didn't specify just for town roads. I believe the specification say for.
But, but the town's concern was the town road being damaged. The state does not have concern. They sent an email saying they do not require an apron.
Again, you read it your way, and we read it our way. I can't make any more comment than that.
Here's the, I think the section where you talk about, all parts and otherwise unpaved driveway shall within three feet of the paved, paved road shall be paved. This paved apron should be a minimum of two inches thick and shall be placed over appropriate base material to minimize settling and movement. No alteration of the pavement of a town road shall be made without approval of the Webster road agent. So that's specifically with, the way I read that, specifically refers to town roads.
I thought it says in there that the town overrides the state on some of their rules.
Something along those lines, yes.
In the, in the fine print of it.
If.
They do on grade, definitely.
Right.
And there, and there's a, there is a legitimate reason for that.
Okay, that's correct. They, they do, but if the town overrides a state, then you would think that the town should be able to say, well, Jeff, you're gonna have to take and put that tire apron there, so you're over and above. So the town rules, if they're over what the state says, then you would have to abide by town rules.
But you have to go back to the purpose.
The what?
You go back to the purpose of the apron.
Purpose of the apron is to get it to.
Is to protect the town's road.
And protect, it's not only to do that, it's to get the water so it doesn't run out of your driveway into the, into the road. That, that's the whole real purpose of it.
That's a good part of it.
Yeah. I used to make them pitch it back four feet. That's what I did. They start, when I got done, that's when they get these new rules out with paving an apron, 'cause I didn't make them do it, 'cause I just signed it, and that's that. But they got this whole thing now where you've got rules that are over and above the state, the town, and if that's what they require.
Right, if, if there weren't this section in there, I agree, that'd be entirely.
Right.
Right, appropriate, but the way it reads.
Well, and we shouldn't have made everybody else take and tie their aprons.
But you didn't.
Well, they, you get up here, they are.
No, we got a whole staff.
Well, you do here, but you go to all the new houses in the last year have had tire aprons before they could get it.
And where are they?
We have no, we have no control over.
Where?
Pearson's, up here on the, headed up White Plains Road.
We, we have no control over what happened in, in the past before this board or myself took hold. Now, I don't know when these driveways you got are done, if they were done, and, and all grandfathered, or what, I have no idea.
When, when the houses built.
But.
I have, these are all twenty, uh, they're all since two thousand seven. Here's one, twenty, twenty nineteen, one twenty-four Battle Street.
So where's that? Which one is that, where?
Wesley Rose.
Yeah. Wesley, and, and, and I know that they're gonna be paving those down there, because Chuck and Rose bought a pavement.
Been there for four years.
Huh?
It's been four years.
Well, I don't know. That's before my, that was before my time, so I don't, I can't answer that one.
Ninety-two Battle Street.
But I, I do know.
No apron.
The other house that they just built, they're gonna, they're paving that one, and I'm pretty sure they're gonna do the others.
Well.
Three thirty-six Battle Street, no apron. Three thirty-eight Battle Street, no apron.
I'm just taking.
Ten thirty-three Long Street, no apron.
Well, just, okay, we can continue this, but I think it's time to, I think it's time to somebody make a motion.
You won't like mine.
Well, do you, do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, you can.
I move that we accept the wording of B two A, that the state driveway permit shall be regarded as compliance with the Webster requirements of the design of driveway-street intersection and grant, uh, grant, um, something.
Make that a little bit of a play, but I don't quite understand your motion.
I think Mr. Evans has a valid point.
Yeah.
And I'm willing to grant him what he wishes, but it's not only, you have to remember, it's not only Mr. Evans, it's, it's.
You have opened up a can of worms that you're gonna be sorry for.
Yeah, yeah, I understand it, but.
You are.
Until we change this wording, this is.
This is gospel. He has to, we have to abide by what's there until you change your, your wording.
Right, and that's the exact point.
Teresa, you vote on an exception or not an exception?
Well, for me, yeah, let's, let's say we grant Mr. Evans a exception.
How about you get Greg Taylor coming in right behind him?
Yeah, we got.
So you got another one, and that driveway right there is headed up, so you're gonna have a problem with that.
Well, I will mention, we've got two other final inspections coming out on Battle Street.
Yeah.
That are waiting for this decision tonight to determine whether they're getting their certificate of vacancies or not without that apron.
Right.
So whatever we decide here, we're gonna have two more people in here probably next week.
Did the, did the state okay that driveway?
I don't know.
Did the state?
That's my point. That's my point.
They didn't give a state permit.
What?
They've got a state permit.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's required.
Exactly, but I'm, I'm talking about the driveway you set it straight up on, so.
Just so you know.
It's, it's not finished, so I, I would imagine that that one there is gonna have some issue with some water.
Right, which is why I'm wondering if the state approved it, if it's gonna, it's obvious it's gonna have issues with water. Did the state approve it? I, I think that's a difference, should be the difference.
Does everybody understand my motion?
Not really. I know what you're getting at. You're trying to give them the, grant them the rights, but if, if, if all these other people all of a sudden start coming in here, and, and they all, you know, they get their needed done, and now you, you let one go, and it's not that I don't wanna see it, 'cause I don't care one way or the other what happens, I mean, the vague things. I never made them do it, but if, if that's what your rule is.
What you're getting at is we need to, until the language is changed.
Until the language is changed, yes.
Until the language is changed, this is what it says. I mean.
And my, my point is there is oversight, um, with a, needing a state permit, there is oversight, whereas if you have a town road, there is no oversight.
Right.
So you wouldn't make exceptions on a town road.
Exactly, no, I, I think you're right on that. So are we, are we ready to take them out here?
I'm gonna abstain from that, so you go. I already know what I'd do.
All right, I'll, in favor of my motion, say aye.
I understand, as to exception, give an exception.
We do your motion, Megan, 'cause I wanna make sure I understand what it is before we vote.
Okay. Section B two A says, in the case of driveway intersecting a state road, the issuance of a state driveway permit is regarded as compliance with the Webster requirements for design of driveway-street intersection. Are we really, I guess my question to, to all is, are we really talking about the driveway-street intersection?
Talking about the right of way portion.
Anyway, I think that what this language says, that the state permit shall be regarded as compliance with the Webster, Webster requirements. That's my reading of that. And I, I understand that there's gonna be a whole bunch more coming in, and that this is not a dead, dead issue going forward.
Not, it's gonna be, initially, you're gonna have to deal with the driveway application and change it very soon before these people come in and start doing the same thing this, this gentleman's doing.
Yeah.
On state roads.
On the state roads.
Right.
If there's a state.
There should be no issue on town roads, but state roads, you're gonna have to do something with it.
I agree.
And, and really, we don't approve them anyway.
No.
So it's like.
The planning board does not approve them.
We don't, we don't approve anything that's on a state road, so.
Yes, we do.
We do? I, I thought, so how come, like, the one up there crossing the old Cloverdale, I won't.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so.
That's, that's an illegal driveway.
Okay, so.
So, he's.
Well, yeah, that is on the town end, that leaves, the board voted to give him the two years to get the state permit, 'cause everything's fine with that in the town side except for the apron.
Can I bring another one up?
Except for no state permits.
What about the red house on Long Street with the tractor trailers? There was never a driveway there, and now there's three entrances.
Oh, wow.
They put gravel in. That's a modification.
They did.
Yeah. Well, then that's gonna be a letter.
Well, he's gotta get in and out.
Both directions.
Huh?
Both directions.
Well, you technically.
So does everybody understand my motion?
I, I don't understand the motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, I guess, well, are we approving what he's doing, or are we turning it down?
Exactly.
Well, that's what I wanna know. We're approving, okay?
So the rest of them, when the rest of them come in, then where, there's no problem with them doing whatever they need to do, right?
Yep.
So they can go for, so like that state road, we shouldn't even have any say in it? So just put that down, black and white.
No, no.
That's what this says.
They still need the state oversight.
No, they still need a state permit, 'cause it says in scope.
Right, right, but we, as far as approving their driveway, have no control over what they're doing.
Dave brought that up.
You do have control past the right of way.
Right.
You have control for that grade.
But where's your right of way start at? Your stone wall?
It's twenty feet, isn't it?
So, so you, your first twenty feet of your driveway would be technically in the state right of way, correct?
Something like that.
Where your stone wall was is state bound from there to the other side. So the four foot of three feet, or whatever it is, a tire doesn't, you, you got no control over telling them that they gotta tire three feet.
You have control.
'Cause you're in the state right of way. It's not their driveway.
Right, but.
His boundary pin is back on the stone wall, correct? So you've got ten feet off that tire.
You have a say if the state doesn't allow them a permit.
Then you have a state, you have.
Then we have a say.
Then you have that authority on the grade, once you get past that, you've got that three hundred feet, you gotta have a passing lane, you've got.
Right.
That authority, 'cause that's the town's concern.
Well, let's take a vote on my motion.
I'm gonna abstain from it, so you guys knock yourselves out.
I vote no.
Okay.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Two to one.
Good luck.
And that to pass. All right, two to one. Okay, we're all set.
Thank you very much, and Mr. Fornier, I apologize, when I wrote that letter, I mistakenly put Paul King as the chairman. I caught that after I sent it.
Okay.
I'm sorry about that.
I didn't take offense.
Be good for the occupancy permit now?
I gotta call Emmett and tell him about it tomorrow, and I'll, I'll have him come down inside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As long as everything else is all set. I think he said everything's all route.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up, C I P, where do we stand here? So Dana's first.
Well, Russ, I thought I would let you speak to ours.
Oh, but you're in charge of the town hall, some wonderful projects.
Well, we have.
'Cause I remember they were doing it September first, and then you were working on them on Monday.
Oh, I can't, I must have been doing something else. We don't have, um, really anything to add to the C I P this year. Um, we have, we got a coffee machine, um, we had, um, the, um, A D A low hanging fruit work, which we have money for in the trust funds. Um, it's just, we need to arrange to have it done. The only thing I can say, I don't think that the new server of thirty thousand dollars is a realistic amount.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with him. I was gonna talk to the expert on that.
And I would say it's more between twenty-two and twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
Any opinion on that one, Dave?
I think it can vary quite a lot based on what current markets are, and especially what labor and/or the time to do the transition will cost. Most of a new server install at this point is not hardware, but labor time to do the migration from one server to the other and find how to make the data go into new software and newer versions of software. So the range is, I think, reasonable, but whether it would be an exact, like, fifteen thousand or thirty, I couldn't tell you.
I think the twenty to twenty-five is about reasonable, 'cause it's in between the two.
I would say the twenty-five is very reasonable, and if that's sitting in, like, the technology fund, then worst case, you can continue to use that every year as we turn over computers and other sorts of things for the updates.
And I think maybe we could use a little bit of office equipment if we had to, because technically, that's part of the office.
The other thing that I wasn't completely comfortable with was the year that it's planned for, 'cause our current server.
Well, that was, our current server was supposed to be replaced last year, the year before that, so I think that date's based on it being replaced already.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah, so I think we might want to shit out a couple more years.
Right, so I'm, I'm thinking that that should be moved up a few years.
Yeah, 'cause I think they last ten years, something like that, ten, fifteen years?
Depending on.
Depending on use, sorry, I didn't, I was gonna be speaking on this tonight.
Well, you're here, so read me, Miguel.
Depending on levels of use and the level of the server you get at the time that you install it. A typical guaranteed lifespan is between three and five years. Uh, you can usually increase warranties up through five years. And then, after that point, you lose, like, immediate same-day turnaround for repairing it. So if you are okay with possible downtime of a day or so, you can usually push to seven, uh, maybe slight, or seven to ten. If the hardware is still continuing to function correctly. If the hardware is not too old to run the software and or security updates you need, it's variable. Five is the safe, uh, number to use for planning, and then you hope it lasts longer.
Okay, so the five years that we had in there is accurate then?
Just a side note, in nineteen ninety-five, I put a Linux server on the internet, I was running, I think it was two eighty-six processor, and it was eight hundred bucks.
Ninety-five, yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately, a lot of the software that we have requires Windows Server, which is a lot of the price of the system.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, good old, good old Bill Gates.
I notice I have short hair.
Anything else we should be looking at here?
I've got a question. Um, that server that you've got, I'm looking at this list here. Um, it says twenty twenty-two, not yet replaced, and it's fifteen thousand, and then there's the server down below, which is thirty. And I got a little confused about which server you're talking about here.
So that's the town hall server?
Yeah, there's only one.
There's only one.
There's two lines for servers in here.
Right, ones for the server that's to be replaced, since both haven't been replaced yet. So we haven't replaced the one in twenty twenty-two yet, we're still waiting to replace that one.
Okay.
We're, and then we're gonna replace another one. So they're two separate lines, cause they're two separate servers.
Two servers, got it, okay, so you're saying total cost, and you've.
We already have the money for the first one.
The fifteen thousand is enough?
Yeah, we already have it.
All right, yeah, well, I'm looking at it right here, fifteen, and you're saying thirty is more than enough for the, um, the second one?
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. And then you will see another server on the police one, but they, they have a completely separate server.
So what are the functions of two servers?
Well, we only have one, but they're, I listed it on two lines, because are the server that's been slated to be replaced, hasn't been replaced yet.
Yeah, but I mean, as a backup, as a mirror, and why, why, why is there two?
So the, there are two servers in town, one is the police server, one is the town hall server. I don't know how he wrote it on the, on the form, cause I didn't pull it up in front of me this second. But the fifteen to twenty or so that would be required to replace the server was there waiting and ready to be able to do that if we absolutely needed to do it this year? Because if it failed or caused problems with the, uh, digital documents, et cetera, uh, then the answer would be, replace the server now. The five years after that replacement is when the expectation would be for the next chunk, which would be that twenty to thirty.
Okay, so that'd be five years.
Yeah, I think these are both referring really to the one server.
To the same server.
That was my confusion.
Right, I can understand the confusion.
Okay, so you replace it now, and then you plan to replace it later, and that's why there's two lines, as a current.
Yeah, just one has not, it hasn't happened yet.
Yeah.
I'm hearing it, I just, I'm wondering, cause this is confusing, so why are we not just setting money aside for emergencies?
Five years down there.
Yeah, and this is a CIP, and the CIP, we're replacing one server. So if we, if we have a need for an emergency fund, it shouldn't be in the CIP, should it?
I, I would suggest that it's not an emergency fund, it's that it's been in CIP, you've been planning for it.
Mm-hmm.
And that just hasn't been spent yet, and you're planning for the additional five years out from that. So it's not like there should be in thirty thousand that goes into it this year. It's that over the next five years, there should be an additional five or six thousand each year to cover the amount that's expected when we'll need to replace it next.
Okay, a little, still a little crazy here.
Think of it like a car.
We've got, I, I hear that, but we've got, if I'm looking at this correctly, from twenty twenty-three through to twenty twenty-nine, we are putting away four thousand dollars to meet the thirty thousand dollars for the one server, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we've got fifteen thousand here, four eight twenty-two, not yet replaced server. I'm suggesting that money does warrant the CIP, and if, we've got fifteen thousand, and it's just in a savings account, we're not planning for a future capital expense, correct?
Right, it's a current expense, not a future expense, I get that.
Well, I think you could not start adding to the future server, if you will.
So the future server could be as much as forty-five thousand?
No, I think that.
That's what I'm reading here.
The, the, the last quote that we got was somewhere around eighteen nineteen or so, and prices keep going up. So the fifteen thousand probably doesn't quite fully cover the current going to be replaced as, basically as soon as possible or as soon as needed server. So the four thousand would, or five thousand, however much is in the table, uh, would go towards making that again viable to happen this coming year. Then you're planning, that would zero out the balance, so now you're planning for the five years afterwards to purchase it.
A little confusing just the way it's written, so.
I'm faulted.
Okay.
I'll also mention, under town hall improvements, we have the money for the painting, now if I could get someone to come and tell us why the building is feeling so badly. Which I'm not convinced that there's any leaks, but I wanna be sure of that.
Moisture, yeah.
Rain.
Well, if there's a lot of trees, it doesn't get the sun.
Yeah, the rain is just.
I, what we did at the meeting house was to test the, the boards. Um, and found out that they had too much moisture in them, and then we found the cause of the moisture was from something we'd never expected, it's coming up through the, the floors, so.
Crawlspace, right?
Yeah, it was the crawlspace, yeah, and then there wasn't any standing water in the crawlspace, it's just when the water came in there, it was just enough moisture to go up through the floors and out through the walls, and it rotted.
That's what we're waiting to have done.
Rotted the boards, yeah.
Yeah.
I should tell you, Mark Kimball has a meter, he got one to test the meeting house. It's not a really expensive little gizmo, you just.
Push it into the board?
Yeah, you just set it for, these are pine, or these are oak, or whatever it is that's on the outside, and, you know, how, how much moisture is in there?
That's.
Just send somebody out once a month and do a test all the way around, and do it again next month, and see what else.
There you go, Russ.
Are there any bets underneath the?
I can do it.
In the crawlspace?
No, there's a nine millimeter polyethylene plastic down there.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, we're, we're hoping to have that resolved and the painting done.
Excellent.
Um, the painting contractor says something must be going on, although it's his paint job, so I suppose that's part of it too.
Hmm. Oh, when, how long ago was it painted, do we have any idea?
Um, I think it was probably about six years ago.
Five or six years ago.
Wow.
Are they gonna?
It's peeling badly for that.
Are they gonna power wash it?
Um, we, we've talked about power washing it, but not until we know what's going on with.
So we're afraid that we know more left of it.
Yeah, just throw some more water into those clavers.
I, that's, that's what I was thinking, when you, when you power wash it, it can create more problems, but I don't wanna open a can of worms.
Well, you know.
You got moisture.
Yes, I mean, look at the outside, there's bugs and dirt.
It's pretty dirty, yeah.
It's pretty dirty, it needs to be washed, one way or another.
What would it cost to re-clad this building in, fine? Is that bad?
Yeah.
Oh, disregard.
Okay, where are we at here?
Uh, that's it for town hall. I think there wasn't really much else for that.
Yeah, I, just my, my own opinion is getting rid of some of these trees around here would give me some.
I think that's part of.
Help, help, that's part of it.
We have a second half of that project coming up this year, is getting rid of some of the trees on that side.
We have, um, we got rid of one tree, cause it was on the building, so that helped. Um, but some of these trees, we weren't up to the five thousand dollar threshold, so I didn't put that on.
We got rid of one tree?
Mm-hmm.
Just one?
Or maybe it was two.
Oh.
We could go count the stumps.
It's cash flow, Barbara, you know?
Oh, I hear ya. About the trees along the wall on this side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are, those are slated to be done.
I know they're not on our property.
I think we got permission from the abutter to do it, cause I think they said that it was our property that they were on.
We have, um, we have talked to him quite some time ago, and of course, I'd have to talk to him again.
Right.
About it. And I had the same issue out back here, because it's, you know, um, Mr. Creighton owns the property right there, so, but he came over, we deal.
Yeah, but none of history should be infecting this, should it?
No, 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 I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, yeah.
But those along that wall are.
I wanted to make sure that they were, that we own those, before we cut them down. Although the one in the building had to come.
The next one is the new police cruiser, police wanna purchase a cruiser.
Did I read someplace that it's two hundred and what, thousand miles on it?
Ninety, forty, ninety-one.
I'd say that was a, a good purchase to be given.
Yeah.
Lasted that many, um, miles.
Probably average for what they do, is that right?
Boy, I really hope I get that out of my Toyota.
You should.
What kind of a Toyota is new?
Highlander. And it runs like, I got a hundred and seventy on it, but it runs like the day I bought it.
I bet, I gotta.
Oh.
You better knock on the wood.
It's no wood.
Okay.
Okay. Two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and forty miles on it. I'd say that needs replacing.
Is that the twenty sixteen?
I think they put the twenty sixteen down.
I see, okay.
This is something that happens every, every year, they need a police cruiser, they, they go three years, and they go another.
Really?
Of course, every single year, they, so they get in three of them, the same year, they get one every year, and they keep the budget down.
It's all good. Works.
It's been working for quite some time, also.
Yes, it has, because we save money.
A few years ago, we did buy two cruisers because of an accident, yeah.
The insurance didn't cover that?
Oh, covered a lot of it, yeah, yeah. And that turned out to be a little more complicated, but.
Oh, yeah.
You got through it.
What's not?
Yeah.
So is there any discussion on this?
He's not saying that the cruiser costs forty-four thousand, is he?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that was gonna be my question, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong here. But I was under the assumption that it was supposed to be either every other year or every third year that the purchase is, which is the reason for having a fund for it to save across the years versus buying every year?
I believe that was the case a number of years ago, when they only had two cruisers, but now they have three. I believe they have three, maybe they even have another one hidden somewhere, but. Yeah, I think, I think that's right, we, we need to purchase a cruiser every year.
How many did you?
There are four cruisers.
Four, yeah, see, they've got one hidden somewhere.
Yeah.
It's a backup, I'm sure.
And that's the, the oldest one is the sixteen.
Wow.
And I think you really do need to keep your police cruisers in shape.
Yeah.
It's okay with me.
So change the CIP to every year, we're going to replace a cruiser?
Well, we've been doing that now for the last number of years, I can't remember how many, but we've been doing.
Have we been doing them every year, or every other?
Two years, we did not do one last year.
Every year, we've been, as long as I've been around, every year.
Has it?
Well, I haven't been watching, so, I didn't know it'd been every year.
Is forty-four thousand include outfitting it, is that?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
That is a good question.
Except, except for probably the computer, probably, that's probably a chance for us.
I can get, I can ask and give it for you for the next year.
Yeah, number three, I.
But part of me, I kinda feel like they equip their cruiser out of a separate fund that they get from. Yeah, from their revolving fund, cause they get something from doing outside details, I think is what it is. I think they get their, they equip it out of that fund.
Most of it, or at least they try to.
Yeah. There's four cruisers on the list.
Three twenty-ones and a sixteen.
So in, sorry. In number seven of the form that they have, where it lists a dollar amount to be funded in each of the CIP years, they've got twenty-two thousand listed every other year, twenty-four, twenty-six, and twenty-eight. So that would, uh, kind of assume that only every four years, you'd be able to replace.
Right, that doesn't make sense.
Cruiser, so something doesn't line up. Uh, maybe that's thinking that every other year, they're purchasing a cruiser.
The chief said that we were gonna be able to skip replacing a cruiser for three years after we buy this one. But that didn't make sense to me, cause if you skip for three years, would you be purchasing two cruisers at the same time? Cause you'd have the two twenty-twenty-ones needing to be replaced at exactly the same time, which I think is.
Of course, this, we have three twenty-twenty-ones.
Right, cause I think that's the problem, cause we have the car accident, so we have them being the same year, and we gotta figure out how to stagger those cruisers against, we're not placing them all at the same time. Cause that's a big hit to the town hall at once, I'm sorry.
Where are you coming up with that one?
Right here.
So I would suggest clarification on what they actually want and need. And then, if that's going to be like an every year sort of thing, then it shouldn't be a fund that we fill in empty fully every year, it should just be a warrant article. Uh, but if it's going to be every other year or something, and that's what we're getting back to, then it should just be funded correctly, to be then.
This trust fund is really strange, because this requires a town meeting vote. The select board cannot withdraw from this one.
Yeah, and I would suggest, even though we're not gonna need something for two years, that we still fund this even every year.
I like that. Every year?
Yeah, and it becomes too obvious, people, you know, all of a sudden you get a forty-four thousand dollar bill, and you say, what's going on here?
Yeah.
Yep.
You shouldn't let it go for five years. You shouldn't let a cruiser go for five years.
The idle time kills it too.
Right.
I think they use the old one for details, you know, the park on the street, flashing the lights, the traffic control, and things like that. I don't think they really use that for patrol, cause you're right, it's old.
Any more discussion about the police cruisers?
Well, what are you recommending that we should do every year, twenty-one thousand, twenty-two thousand? Instead of forty-two every other year?
Right. I don't like that either.
Yeah. Tw- twenty, I'm okay with that. Well, I think.
Sounds a little high.
Cruisers are going up every year, so even for saving twenty-two thousand a year, by the time we get to year five, a cruiser's gonna exceed that savings. So how much do we want to recommend for each year? Or just recommend for this year and change it next year?
Like, would the old one, they trade them in?
Well, I don't know, they didn't trade in the last one, which is why we still have that one.
Oh.
They didn't trade it in. They didn't trade it in, so they kept it doing outside details. So they did less wear and tear on the other ones.
We're getting a fleet of vehicles.
We're doing twenty-two every other year for, one, two, three, four, five years.
Every year, you mean?
Every other year for five years. According to what we have here now.
Yeah, according to what we have here, that's right.
Well, that's what the police recommend.
So that makes sixty-six thousand in, in five years.
Okay.
Divide that by five and, and fifteen to eighteen thousand would be more than enough to cover all of that plus any increase that you might have.
Right.
I wouldn't go, I don't think we need to go twenty-two.
Right, if you take that, um, that sixty-six thousand, you know, the twenty-two thousand three times. Sixty-six thousand, you divide it by the six years that you see here, that's only eleven thousand a year. So if you put fifteen thousand a year, you're gonna have room for inflation.
I hear what you're saying, but I expect him to buy it earlier than, if we're buying every.
But there is one that needs to be purchased now.
Every year, or even every other? Will we have enough by the time we need to replace the next? At fifteen? At twenty?
So that's the two thousand one, uh, twenty-one you said?
So the twenty-two, so if a cruiser's good for three years, we're gonna have to replace. If there's three twenty-twenty-ones, we'd have to replace three cruisers all at the same time.
But I wouldn't suggest replacing three at once.
No.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Because we've got three twenty-twenty-ones.
Do you want three years, do you want the fourth year, one the fifth year?
Yeah, because we'd have to figure out how to stagger them and how much money we still want to save. Because chances are you're gonna have to replace a couple back to back.
Yes.
In, in order to start staggering them out again, because it's not gonna, it's gonna take years to stagger them out right again.
So we're looking at forty-five thousand dollars for a vehicle, I'm rounding.
Yep.
Times four vehicles divided by six years? How much do we need to save every year?
I'll get my calculator.
I'm working on that myself.
So what is it, four of them at forty-five? That's a hundred and eighty thousand.
I was rounding, but yeah.
Hundred and eighty divided.
Divided by four, for four cruisers. Oh, by six years.
Six years.
Six years, that'd be thirty thousand.
Thirty.
Thirty thousand a year.
Thirty thousand, yeah.
How, how much do we have already?
Twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty-seven thousand, so we don't have enough to buy one yet, right?
There must, there must be a way to shorten that so you don't have to do one every single year. Uh, or two and, or three in, in the same year. There must be a way, even if you were to take a cruiser and turn it in a year early to get it out of that pattern. I don't see why we should have to do two of, uh, in, in a year's time, or three in a year's time.
I, I don't think they should do two in any year.
That, that is a viable option, because we could get trade-in money if we did it early.
So I want to give two pieces of color information to hopefully help you make some decision. Uh, I wish the chief were here to, to comment and correct anything that I might say that's not. But basically, um, when we originally got the extra cruiser of the same year. One purchase had been delayed because of, I think, being able to get the vehicle. And then the next one was purchased using the same years' stuff. Because that would reuse the equipment from the crashed vehicle. So that's how we ended up with two that were kind of similar in years. That being said, there are, under normal circumstances, approximately three cruisers that are used on a normal basis. One is going to be the chief's, one is going to be, uh, Phil's. And then one is going to be used by any of the other officers, be it the full-time officers. That are not the immediate rush from home on the call all the time. And/or all of the part-time officers that fill up the rest of the shifts. That third one, uh, is typically been the oldest one, uh, that gets the most miles on the road all the time. Because it's the, once you're here, use it for patrol, because we're going to get rid of it soon. Uh, until that point, it doesn't get typically tons of miles on it. So you have cruisers that don't get a lot of miles or extra runtime, one that gets a lot. And in this case, we've also got that fourth one, which is now what they're asking to replace. I know they are looking at rehiring, uh, a police officer to replace our full-time officer that is no longer, uh, with us. Uh, for, just in town, he's doing other things now. Uh, but even with that, the three cruisers is what would typically have been used. Um, and then we've got this fourth one. So I believe the chief's plan, when he pitched getting that extra one, was that's why we can stagger this out even longer. But I think the every other is probably fine, even though we've got the twenty-twenty-one cruiser. Because this will give us a newer one for the old one. And then give us more time to get there and still kind of have a backup. So just, and, and I'm not the chief, I wish he could correct or re-say or state that himself, but. That was my understanding when he described it to us last time.
In terms of level funding here, what would you recommend?
I, and, I would anticipate based on what he's showing on the form, that he's trying to buy a cruiser every other year. So you're gonna want to have the full funding of a cruiser every other year.
So twenty-two grand every year?
Basically.
Which appears to be what, I think they just typed in wrong, but I think that's what they're actually suggesting that they want.
All right, okay.
Please go and.
I like that, twenty-two grand.
Talk to the chief first, but I think that's my interpretation.
Okay. Any other comments? Are we done?
We're done that part.
That part.
Well, no, this is all that's done for CIP tonight. So the transfer station, I'm waiting for Neil. He's setting up a CIP committee meeting with his CIP. They're gonna have the people from that firm who did the study.
Know-its?
Know-its, and they're gonna have the transfer station people there to discuss that cost. And we both talked about, and we agreed, instead of having two separate meetings with all the people showing up, just have everybody go to the same meeting and then we can all talk at the same time.
Let me know when that meeting is, I'd like to.
Yeah, well, we're yours, we're having it as a joint CIP meeting between both towns, that's how we're doing it. And I think the select boards are gonna be invited as well, it's gonna be a big meeting.
A big, a big.
A big, big meeting, a big blowout.
Happy, happy fest.
So happy.
So, so like, all this stuff going on down there, what, is it like the, the thirteen million to clean that up or something?
No, there, there's three. There's three options. The first option is no, no-go, whatever. The second option is haul, all, all the stuff away for thirteen and a half mil. And the third option, if I understand, if I read it correctly, is to cover it, basically. And that, you're looking at three and a half mil.
Yeah. So now, uh, getting back to the transfer station though, is, uh, like the pack-a-system that's packing these new trailers. I heard tell that that needs to be replaced down there, getting close or time.
Do we have CIP for this station? I mean, for the rest of the stuff in the city?
Yeah, it's already in there.
It's in there. I don't think it's, it's filled out.
The packer is part of it.
Yeah, they definitely need it. They run a ten, a ten year.
A ten-year packer.
Ten-year packer, they really need that. The, the problem, they have a small one and they're constantly, it almost takes a person full-time to put the stuff in, pack it, bail it, move it.
So, so that's cardboard though, correct? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, card- cardboard, but they also bail the tin, the aluminum cans.
Right, okay, so.
Cardboard moment.
But I, I heard that the packer that packs your garbage going into these trailers was on the verge of being replaced.
Isn't that the ten-year packer?
No, no.
It's not.
It's a different one.
Yeah, no, this is way different than what we're talking. So now how come, and I mean, I, it's, you know, in the trucking business. Why don't they have open-top trailers that haul it? They have MBI haul all these new trailers that we're buying, okay? These trailers that we're buying, they push the garbage into them, pack a trail, you know, it's a packer. And, and if this packer is getting ready to on its last leg, pushing this dump out, why don't we have a? You know, you, you can buy a live floor trailer way cheaper than what you're buying these for, you gotta move it anyway. And then if we have to buy a packing system to push into these trailers, that's a lot of money.
You need to educate Hopkinton.
Yeah, that's just what we need to do, because that's not, it's not, the, the, it doesn't make any sense what they're doing. And I, and these trailers that they're buying, you know, that's all they're good for.
You're gonna get a wonderful opportunity to do that.
I'm gonna, don't you worry, I'm pretty vocal.
I'm gonna look forward to it. I'll bring the popcorn.
That's, don't need it.
Davis has the beer.
They're probably gonna need earplugs.
Will it be here?
No, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be in Hopkinton.
We need to drag them over here every so often.
Well, they were here last.
They came to the select.
So will they have answers on us when it comes time to, when we have this meeting that they are gonna have all the eye-studded of stuff that needs to be fixed?
I certainly hope so.
And whatnot?
The, the agreement for how that works is still being written and finalized, and then will be brought to the voters, uh, for, for town meeting. So we're kind of operating under the assumption that that's the way that we should do things. But that at least gets both CIPs involved, so that they won't, there won't be surprises. In theory, when their CIP is looking at information. Their Department of Public's work, works person who manages the transfer station should be there or be presenting it to them.
Yeah.
We have really tried to work hard on communication.
It's the answer.
And, you know, so that we can get the answers that we need.
Well, what I would love to see.
They've done a good job on that.
I'm sorry, I can cut you out.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, the CIP that I used to see from Hopkinton listed all of their equipment and when they expected to replace it. And this only had, you're just talking about a packer, I thought there was gonna be this one.
Yeah, no, 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 you're just talking about something.
I know, something that's not on the list, so.
Surprised.
Yeah, we really need the, the, the one that they present to the Hopkinton board, not little pieces of it that they're giving to Webster. Because we're, we're missing something we're gonna have to pay for.
Yeah, I saw their, Hopkinton's CIP for last year, and it was quite, yeah, it was quite detailed, it was very, it was a nice piece of work.
Yes.
I, I don't know, I guess that, that bothers me, just that dump bothers me a little bit, the expense of that dump.
Well, we have certainly a lot of room for improvement.
We don't really have an option, this is a still mandated function.
Oh, no, we do, we do have an option.
We have to do solid waste, we the town Webster, right? So how are you gonna do it?
You, you take and do, uh, some, like some of these other small towns do, they take you. You've got a, uh, granted, you've got to lay out a little bit of capital, but like this live floor thing, load it, done, out of here.
That's a good option, and I'm looking forward to it, talk about it.
And, and the thing of it is, the thing of it is, it's like, you know, I, I get all this stuff, they, they haul it to a landfill. And rather than, I mean, the Pennacook, at least, you know, they say about the smog, but what about your water? You know, you're putting that stuff in the ground, all that dump is going in the ground and that stays there.
The Chichester, is that where that is? Canterbury, the ash pits.
Uh, they have ash pits, yeah, but, but I mean, some, it depended upon what that ash is, that's good for hayfields, you know, some of that. It, and, and it's.
We got out of the Pennacook agreement years ago, ten years ago, so you need to talk to the, to the burned place in Pennacook about, you know, can I have your ash? I want it on.
Well, that's kind of personal.
I want it on my.
I, I just, it seems like, you know, if you're gonna be environmentally, granted, either way you got it, you got the dump, you gotta get rid of it. But if you're burning it, you generate electricity, and we're using that, you know, so.
Yeah, there, there's a whole backstory behind why we got out of that that has to do with that electric cost.
Well, I get, I get that too, but still, what's it gonna cost if you take and put a rubber skin over that dump? And, and then all of a sudden, wow, you got problems.
Well, we've been paying for that for a very long time.
Right.
Well, one of the reasons that we wanted to get out of that is because of whatever may show up as a hazardous waste in that ash field. And we got out of that with, uh, uh, there's a word for this legally. Uh, we're not on, on the hook for it ever, which is just wonderful, actually. So, um, I, I, I think this would be a lot like the Septish Lagoon problem we're looking at right here. They changed the parts per million for PFAS and suddenly we're not in compliance anymore. Same thing could happen with that ash field. And we're off the hook for that, we're not off the hook for this.
No.
Well, I was, I know I mentioned earlier, but I was talking to Matt Monahan at the Central New Hampshire Planning, and he thought there might be some, uh, brownfield money for this.
That's a real possibility.
I am hoping. PFAS project.
I have one more thing to throw at you, I had a conversation with a Hopkinton resident who's on the budget committee. Who said, um, well, would Webster have a problem if we ended up rebuilding the recycling committee, uh, the recycling building and it's a hundred thousand dollars? I'm not seeing that only twenty-five thousand is on this document until today, so is there some different price?
We pay twenty-five percent, is that?
Right.
So this was, this is twenty-five percent up. Okay.
So that's rebuilding the packer?
No, the recycling, um, buildings, the buildings themselves.
Just.
I mean, if they get a ten-yard packer, I don't know where they're gonna put it. Plus, you go in there and there's all that electronic here and it's like stacked up design and, I mean, I don't know.
Well, that's something that definitely.
Not many residents use the bags as opposed to, which is supposed to help pay for this as well.
You mean?
Is there any, any way we can talk about that as well? I'm sorry, talk about. Accountability as far as residents, um, being one town or the other. We pay for ours in Webster through our taxes, but Hopkinton, I guess pays for theirs through bags.
No, they pay for it through taxes too.
Oh, they do now?
They always have.
Yeah.
They just have to separate it out now, they have to pay for both. Yeah. The bag is only for what you throw in the hopper and all the recyclables, they don't have to pay extra for. That's why the bag program is supposed to improve recyclers.
Well, I'd like to see no checking stickers at the dump.
That too, that's the other part of accountability, yes.
That's the big part.
Because there's some conquered.
Checking stickers.
Checking to make sure they got those stickers.
And checking not just the stickers, to make sure they're Webster or property.
Stuff just down the road.
Conquered.
Oh, without a sticker?
Yeah, they don't check stickers.
I don't know, I mean, I, they are on all my trucks, so.
Yeah, but they're. I think if, I think you could reduce the inflow by ten, twenty percent if you just check stickers.
Well, the alternative here is that we have to have another employee to go check all those stickers.
That's right.
So it costs us money to check the stickers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's somebody at the hopper, there's somebody at the hopper all the time.
Yes, there is.
So the, um, concept of enforcement has come up, and I talk with the folks at the transfer station, just every time I'm there, basically. Green bags has always been an enforcement issue for, uh, the town of Hopkinton. Depending on who you talk to, whether it was or was not supposed to completely offset all of their costs. They pay a lot of their costs through taxes. The green bag program, the revenue from it goes towards their share of the, uh, transfer station to help them pay for it. But there's still seventy-five percent of, of the cost. As far as the enforcement portion of it. I was basically told that the, uh, for a couple of years, the transfer station was saying, this person, this person, or these vehicles, et cetera. Are coming here and not appropriately dumping, whether it's no green bag when they should or no sticker. Uh, and they were handing that to the town of Hopkinton. I don't know what that actually means, but they said they were handing it to the town of Hopkinton, who then didn't do anything with it and said they couldn't. My, knowing just enough to be slightly dangerous, uh, my recollection of this would be that if it were. My, knowing just enough to be slightly dangerous, uh, my recollection of this would be that, uh, if it were, for example, involving license plates, you wouldn't be allowed to look that up because it's a DMV thing. So, they were basically doing the job with the people that they had or have, uh, but rather than turning people away, they were saying, let's record it. And I don't know what the answer to that is, there's probably some sort of answer, because otherwise you wouldn't be able to get away with, for example, tolls that just send you a check based on your, uh, sorry, send you a bill based on your license plate. So you have to be able to have license plate for monetary funding somehow.
That's because that's run through the DMV.
No, no, you don't.
Uh, sometimes.
Although, when you do the, the electronic tolls?
If you're in the wrong lane.
If you're in the wrong lane and they send you a bill, that's run through the DMV, so they have all the license plate numbers.
But, but my point is, they were already, they had somebody that was doing enforcement, but it wasn't prevent them from it and send them home with their trash.
Which is really answering.
Which of course then gets into, somebody's gonna have a real problem and so how do you deal with that, which maybe that's why they weren't doing it or were told not to.
Not an easy job.
I mean, it's not an easy job.
And they should put up a sign out front, say, you know, we're checking stickers, only valid Hopkinton Webster.
And then the first few weeks you do the police officer.
That needs to be addressed as far as I'm concerned. I mean, and I think, personally, I think the cost of checking it could pay for itself.
I wonder if there's that many SCOP laws.
Other towns have.
I know that, that whenever they have an issue, they turn it over to the select board. And so, you know, if the select board chooses to write a letter, you know, or do anything about it, it's up to them.
Well, I, it shouldn't be in the select board, it should be part of the-
An enforcement arm, like we should need zoning, yeah.
It should be part of the dump responsibility, they should hire somebody, they should put it in their budget.
At the gate, look for stickers.
My time, they, time they kick you out if you don't have the permit.
Every town, the other two towns I work for, there's a dump guy.
No way.
Checks your sticker, checks your, your registration, if you're not a town resident and you don't have the right colored sticker, you're gone.
Yeah, putting it, putting it in terms of-
Yeah, but they got like different colors stickers.
They do, every year's a different color.
Well, no, I mean, the, see, we don't get one every year.
Yeah, no, you get the same one.
You should.
Yeah, but I got three different colored stickers for Webster.
There was a, um, item brought up a few years ago from the Hopkinton transfer station that they wanted to take it in trash from anybody.
Not trash, it was only recyclables and I was all for that program and then we had a meeting in Hopkinton and they decided, well, the, the neighbors said that we would have radioactive waste dripping down the street, so.
The, the problem is, there's, there's, there's no money in that stuff, I mean, you take it in.
If we, if we charge them to dispose and then we sell the recyclable and we can be selective about what we allow, this, only the stuff we can sell, we actually could offset our tax costs, but.
I'm not in favor of taking-
Anybody's dump.
Anybody's dump.
There's money in metal and, and paper, not generally much money in the others.
Yeah, so, I mean, the recycling, I don't think covers the cost of the management.
Of the program, no, it does not, it never has.
So, taking in more is not gonna solve that problem.
It's just a little more revenue, that's all.
I, I just, soon have less stuff to deal with, less input, less-
Good approach, yeah.
Yeah, do you wanna say something?
You look at that road that the dump is on and whatever, Pennacook Road, whatever it is.
Yeah.
You go down the road, two miles, three miles, and you're in Concord.
Yeah.
Those guys would be able to come to the Webster dump a lot quicker than they could go all the way to Concord to their dump.
Concord has curbside.
That's part of the-
They don't have to take it anywhere, they just put it out beside the road and Concord takes it away.
I've never seen that curbside out on that road, but.
I drive that road, I'm a mile from the Concord line, trust me, Concord picks up curbside.
Is that city or is that side?
No, every house all the way down the road's got their dumpsters on there.
Casella does it for them, right?
I'm sorry?
Casella's the one that is in charge of it.
No, I haven't paid attention.
Yeah.
But I dance around those routinely.
You don't try to hit them?
I believe Concord has a bag program as well.
They do.
So people that want to avoid that, just drag down the street instead.
Yeah, they could. All right, we're ready to-
Any other issues?
I was just gonna bring up the next part, which is the roads and the fire department is gonna be next month at the regular planning board meeting. We're waiting for a study from the Central New Hampshire Planning Commission, they're doing a road surface management study, which should give us some estimates on the cost of, you know, doing some road maintenance across town. And Emmett's working with them to do that study. Hopefully we'll have some numbers.
I'm not optimistic that you're gonna get some numbers out of this.
Well, the numbers are coming out of the Central New Hampshire Planning Commission. So it might help us plan a little.
Which is for paved roads.
Which is for the paved roads.
Not dirt.
Not for the gravel roads.
We don't have that many in town, I'm sure that Emmett knows them intimately and can give us prices on those.
Well, there is quite a few, there's like twenty, twenty miles of dirt road or something.
Close to it.
And how many miles are paved?
Used to be thirty-seven, all total.
So nearly half of our roads are not paved?
Right.
Half of our town maintained road, uh, no, roughly one-third of our town maintained roads is not paved. We also have a fair amount of paved state road.
Yeah.
Like, obviously one-twenty-seven, Tyler Road, et cetera.
Learn something new every day.
I didn't ask Tyler Road is state road.
State maintained?
State maintained.
In the summer.
They, they maintain the road, we make sure the road is clear, so we do all the plowing and stuff on it. For example, the tarring and striping, they did. Without replacing the, the base, so in two or three years, expect to see the frost heat back.
Yep. Fun stuff. Okay. I think, do you wanna hold up on the rest of the stuff, it's getting late, or do you wanna?
Is there any, is there any slam talks here?
It's just the legislative update, I sent a little thing with that, it's three, three items and then there's minutes.
All right, let's-
See you, Dana.
Yeah, thank you for coming, Dana.
Sorry to keep you forever. I know you like being here all my Saturdays.
Well, you don't have that bed ready downstairs?
Yeah, sure.
Um, it's getting late here, so let's wrap it up.
So we're done with the CIP? Yeah, we're done with the CIP. For tonight. For tonight, you said a month from now, let me begin? I think we're gonna meet at the next planning board meeting, okay. Cause I'm still waiting, I don't expect the stuff from Central New Hampshire until the beginning of October.
Okay.
So, I figure they're going out the twenty-seventh and the twenty-ninth to get the data and I expect them to turn it around in about a week, two weeks, at least, it would be the turnaround time. So I figure if the meeting's on the third week, we should have it by then. And if not, we might have to postpone it a little longer. And I don't know when the Hopkinton one's gonna be, they still haven't had their first CIP meeting, so we're ahead of them on that. Thanks. Um, well, make sure and share all the information you get as soon as you can, so I have a chance to read. I have been putting a bug in Neil Cass's ear about every week and a half to two weeks. I've already talked to him three times in the last two months to see when this meeting's gonna be. And he hasn't scheduled it yet? Correct.
He's getting paid a big money too.
And Dana's asked him twice.
I don't think he schedules it.
I don't think he does either. Ah, okay. Actually, I don't need him to get things done. Yeah, he does. I think he's in the same boat we are, he's waiting for them to schedule it and we're just trying to get that information. Okay. Well.
Okay, let's talk about the minutes from last month, August seventeenth.
If you will excuse me, I think this is my exit.
Okay, thank you for coming, Barbara.
Thank you.
Yeah, see you.
See you soon.
Are there any corrections?
Well, I thought you were, the way you were sounding, you were awful, I was gonna be upset, but. You were like, oh, it just sounded like you didn't like them, I was like, oh no.
No, I, I, I think it's perfect.
Oh, great, thank you. Just don't let Dave look too closely at me.
I'm not here.
All right, good point.
Or I should say I wasn't here.
I think this is the longest meeting we've had in a while.
Yeah, it is. Well, the CIP stuff is sort of hard to understand.
Yeah, and there's a lot of stuff going on with the transfer station right now.
Yes.
Sounds like that's gonna get expensive.
It is, and I don't know if there's any real way around it. I'm hoping we get grants, that's the, that's the way out.
That'd be good.
Uh, if there are any comments on the last month's minutes? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any other business?
Unless you wanna go over the legislative update? No. There's really only one important one and the state basically passed a law that says the fire chief can regulate the interiors and driveways, which we were already doing, so.
That's good.
As, um, I am not planning on renewing another term, so my term would be up in March. I know I'm not gonna make the next two meetings because of prior commitments to doctors and whatever, so that leaves me about four months, three months. If you want, I can resign now, so you can appoint Teresa if she wants to be a full-time member and I will continue as, to come when I can as an alternate.
What would be your preference?
Well, I can't guarantee I'm gonna be able to come to any of the next meetings, it all depends upon what's going on.
Well, just as a personal note, I'm, I'm glad you're, you've been a great member of the name, I wanna thank you.
Very knowledgeable.
Very knowledgeable and you've worked at it. Driveways, very.
I've had a lot of years on it, so I've got a lot behind me, um, but I guess I'm gonna have to caution you guys to just watch what you're doing. Uh, like tonight, you opened up a can of worms and you're gonna have a lot of complaints from, I bet you from the town, townspeople. You've made your decision, so, but you'll need to change your driveway regulations sooner rather than later.
We, that, that, I, I think probably at some point that we really should take it, kind, it's not, we're gonna be able to go through every single thing, but I think we probably should get everything clear, black and white, down on paper and, and I know that's gonna take a lot, but.
Well, I, I already, I already did, made a stab at that and I sent it to Russ and, um, I'm thinking we should, I mean, that's, I think it's gonna have, it's gonna have to do things, you're gonna have to have a public hearing on it.
Yep.
And then I think it's gonna have to go before the town meeting, right?
So which one, is this the zoning stuff or driveway changes?
Well, both.
The zoning stuff, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to write the ordinance out, that has to happen, we have to write the changes to the ordinance. And we have to have a pub, a public hearing in November, so that we can get it on the warrant. For the driveway regulations, we just have to make the amendments and then hold a public hearing.
Well, can we do the public hearing like November, get everything, I mean?
We can do the public hearing.
I, I don't wanna have two public hearings, basically.
No, one's good.
So in November, we'll have a public hearing with, I, I mean, any changes that you want or you want, um, send them to me. You don't even have to quote the right thing, just send, you know, remember this, an idea or whatever.
Cause I know Marlo wanted to take a look at the driveway breaks too.
And then we'll have a hearing in November for changes to zoning and to driveway.
So, like, next month, can we go over some of this stuff before we have the hearing?
That would be a good idea.
You know, kinda?
November's the earliest we can hold the public hearing.
Okay, so.
So that's the first month, we could do the hearing in December if we have to.
But if we went over it maybe like next month and just kinda, we can figure out what we think needs to be fixed and fix it.
Yeah.
And then we'll have the meeting in November and it would be cut, dried, done, right? Is that how that would work?
That's a great idea.
Yeah, and that way it's done and then we're not dragging, getting dragged through the mud.
I mean, my own, I think we're pretty much on the same page.
The same page, the night out.
On zoning stuff, I think the driveway stuff still has a lot of discussion still in it.
Yeah.
That's why I'm concerned with doing the driveway stuff in November, cause I don't think the discussions have been had yet. With the zoning stuff, we had those discussions.
Well, let's-
Yeah, but that's, we're not, we're not gonna do all kinds of, the driveway thing, it's, we just make sure that it's clear, right? That's all we're gonna do, is clear things up short and simple, right?
So let's put that on the agenda for next week and come with any ideas that you may have. And we'll, we'll try and get a preliminary, uh, reading and all that stuff.
Would you be open to a work session maybe, instead of trying to get it all into one meeting?
Well, that's, that's, that's also part of my concern, cause we have to get it, we have to draft it, so that, we have to have it finalized to be presentable at the public hearing, like we have to have it in the final stage.
Let's, let's, let's do a prelim, let's do, next week, we'll do it, we'll talk about it, okay? And if we can't agree on things or it becomes too detailed, we'll, we'll put it off and have a work session in sort of late, early November or something.
Next week, you, you wanna?
No, next month.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be gone, not next week, the week after, so I won't be around.
Yeah, no, next month, we'll have, as you said, we'll have the discussion.
All right.
I'll have to, cause we're gonna have to work on the zoning language and probably send that to the attorney at some point. I would wait until after we, we do the public hearing, get comments, in case there's any changes. Cause with the zoning awareness, that goes to town meeting, I'd wanna put that through the attorney before we-
All right.
Cause I think that makes sense. Unless anybody disagrees with that.
That deal. Everybody's-
I'm just looking, I'm just saying.
I'm just a public guy, this is, this is-
You're, you unfortunately have the, you're on the slideboard.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your attendance and I appreciate your, your comments tonight.
Yeah, no, you get input put to it, cause-
Yeah, because we're newbies here.
I just-
It's just, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be, we, if we get it cleared up, then it will be, there shouldn't be any issues, it is what it is.
Yeah, and you're always gonna have an issue.
Well, yeah.
Always gonna be somebody.
Well, yeah, yeah.
They'll come in here and they're gonna block the system, I don't care how you, how you caught your eyes.
I get that, I do get that.
Paul has got it correct. Always somebody.
There's always, then you got your, got a sign, just cause you didn't wanna pay title of the dollar to have it running.
I get it.
So now you've got yourself a problem, so.
Well.
I understand it. Um, this is just a side note, that the selectmen sent a note to Edison Chee, who owns that dump on Centennial.
Centennial.
It's a small lot and he put in a driveway there. We thought, we told him, you know, he had, he applied for a permit.
Right.
No, he had to put in a covert and whatever, anyway, he's just gone in and put the driveway in, so he sent him a note saying, there's, he had three options. The third option was, um, court.
Yeah, so if he doesn't respond, we take him to court.
We knew this was, that was gonna happen.
He, yeah, of course we do.
I told you there, I didn't get going.
He put his vehicle down in there and then-
We're not stupid.
Well, we gave him the benefit of the doubt.
And we did too.
And we were proven right.
But, uh, what's happening with the driveway on Battle Street?
We've discussed that, Craig has talked to them and I think-
No, 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 there's one up, further up here, where they did the subdivision, they were gonna build, they did, uh, the same company did the one on Colerode.
Are you talking about where they put the septic in? So with the house, the one right up the road?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that is a temporary.
I stopped by there tonight and there's absolutely nothing going on.
Yeah, there's nothing going on with it right now. Cause there's two, there's two driveways that are gonna have to be shut down that are temporary accesses. There's the one on the side of the building that they've been using for construction on the house, and then there's the one on the other side where they opened the wall up to put the new septic field, the leach field in.
Okay.
So both of those are gonna have to be shut before.
And he supposedly is gonna have it down the road quite a bit further.
Right, but I haven't heard anything about them. That subdivision still isn't even finalized.
That, no, okay.
So they, they don't even have their subdivision, because they need to get us that New Hampshire DES shoreland permit before we're gonna finalize that, and they haven't got it to us.
Okay.
And I think there's a certain shelf life on that, that application. If they don't get it to us, I think within another year, the whole thing might expire and they have to do it again.
And what's happening with ninety-seven Battle Street?
You mean ninety-two? Ninety-two?
Ninety-two.
Okay.
Is that?
Cause that's to Bello?
No, ninety-seven, down just below me. The Rose. The Rose driveway.
Oh, the Rose driveway, yeah.
In the back. Have they got the permit?
So I, I talked to Emmett recently. He said he talked to them. They're still finishing some stuff off the house and, like other people I know, they're waiting to hear what happened tonight and whether they're gonna put an apron in.
So they're putting a house in?
Yep, there you go. See, there's another one you're gonna have to deal with, I'm sorry to everybody.
Cause you have the Wunder Liches who are building on Battle Street right now. They're, yeah.
Good luck.
Um, do we wanna?
Uh, just a, just a quick comment on that. Every morning, I see vehicles going, coming, coming out of there, so someone is staying there overnight.
And which one? The, the Roses?
Those.
I'm sure.
Just so you know.
One, the item Paul brought up about him not being available. Do we want to make you a alternate?
That, I would consider being an alternate until March, yes.
Yeah, let's do that, and.
I don't know the procedures, whether you have to go in front of the select board to get her appointed, if she wants to, or.
She's already been appointed.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so let's, I'll make a motion.
Well, she's appointed to be an alternate. I don't know if she can be appointed.
I mean, I'll look, I'll look into it, but I don't think.
Okay.
I, I'm gonna make a motion here, that we appoint or allow Teresa to be a full-time member and Paul King to be an alternate until, uh, his exit in March.
Yep, okay, I'm okay with that.
One second, Dad.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Paul, I, I hope you, you are an alternate and you keep on, you're on March.
Well, I'll stay on until March, but beyond March, I'm not, I'm not making any plans.
Yeah.
I've, I've got my other job, I'm keeping that one, but I'm not gonna make any plans and any promises that I can keep.
Okay. Well, we appreciate all that.
We have any motion, Bill Jer.
But I do, but I do, we'll tell you, I won't be here the next two months because of, yeah, appointments.
Um, I'm with you, Jared.
All in favor?
All right.
That one I can move on.
All right. Till the next time. Wow, that was long.
It was long.
We'll see you guys, thank you.
It's lasting two hours.
Yep.